Good morning. It is Wednesday, September 21st. And we will be soon engaging in council time. But prior to that, a very important work session. It is the annual presentation of financial reports by the auditor's office. So let's begin with that. And then we'll have questions from council following. Please go ahead.
Chief Chair Barrowman, I'm Mark Gasway, the county finance director. And today I have with me Mitchell Kelly, who is our reporting and analysis manager. And on behalf of the auditor, we are grateful for this opportunity to meet with, excuse me, to meet with council this morning to formally present these financial reports. Most of these reports have been available for some time. I just want to let council know that we do enjoy the opportunity to have a formal discussion about these reports each year. We've had a very busy summer, so this is a little bit later than normal. Typically, typically, we'll report out in July or August. But I think we've had lots of conversations around other topics this year, particularly the ARPA discussion. So we're a little bit later than normal. So if you could forward to the next slide. Today, we're going to talk about our four main financial reports that are prepared by the auditor's office. And I just want to point out that these reports are prepared and addressed to council and to the citizens of Clark County. If you read the opening sections of each of these reports, you'll see that all of these reports are meant to be directed to council. We report for the county, although we're reporting through the auditor's office, reporting on behalf of the whole county. And the the reports are directed to the citizens of the county as well. Our, we'll spend a little bit of time talking about our annual comprehensive financial report. Mitchell will talk a little bit about our popular annual financial report. Then we'll spend a little time on the financial trends monitoring report. And then just briefly, our impact fee report. So if you could go to the next slide, please. I just want to point out our annual comprehensive financial report is quite extensive. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time on it. I do want to point out that, oh, I also wanted to note, I hope all of the counselors by now have received hard copies of these reports. If you haven't, please let us know. We have done a lot of things electronically. All of the reports are posted out on the website for those in the audience that may not have a copy, but they're available. And we would love to make them available in either format, whichever is preferable. So I just want to point out a couple of sections in the annual comprehensive financial report. We're not going to go into an in-depth, it's quite extensive, over well over 200 pages. We have our first section, it's our letter of transmittal, which is addressed to council and to the citizens of Clark County. And it does summarize some of the content of the chapter of the, of the report. Yeah, I would certainly recommend, if you don't want to go through all 200 pages, certainly recommend reading the letter of transmittal. It's, it's a almost executive summary type of a, of a section. Then within that letter of transmittal, you will note that the 2021 annual financial report has already been awarded the certificate achievement from the Government Finance Officers Association. This is the county's 35th consecutive year receiving this award. It's, I think back 35 years. And I don't know what you were doing, but I doubt if I was thinking a whole lot about governmental accounting at the time. So within the, the next section is management discussion and analysis. It's, it's a more of a narrative type version with some, some graphs and charts in there, talks about the financial statements. And then because of the size and extent of the reporting in the county, we have pages 33 through 216 with financial statements. That sounds like a lot, it is. It is that we have a lot of different funds in, in the county that we have to account for. We account for our funds on a countywide basis and also individual basis. And it's very, very comprehensive. Then in the end of the report, there's a few pages on a statistical section. This statistical section is somewhat like our, our trends report. It goes, that covers 10-year period. We don't do a lot of commentary in this statistical section like we do in the trends report. But it, it's there, there's some very timely information in there, some, some very interesting information as well. So if, are there any questions on this particular report? We're going to go through these just briefly, one at a time. If, if you have a question on any of this, we can wait till the end or you can jump right in. So okay, let's go to the next slide and I'll turn some time over to Mitchell.
Thanks, Mark. So the second report we'll be talking about is called the Popular Annual Financial Report. This is another report that the Government Finance Officers Association has recommended that governments prepare. And is a report that we, this is our second year reporting this report. If you could go to the next slide. The Popular Annual Financial Report, or PAFR, is designed to be readily accessible and easily understandable for the citizens of Clark County and presents the information that is from our acter, our annual comprehensive financial report in a more accessible format. As I said, this is the second year preparing the report. And last year, the 2020 Clark County PAFR, we received an award for outstanding achievement in reporting. So we also submit, submitted this report again this year, our 2021 report. The report details high level, the information of the county, details trend, a three-year trend of our income statement and then also our balance sheet. And then if you could go to the next slide. The report details a few key parts. One of them goes into the general fund and details the unassigned or available general fund balance. As you can see, in 2021, we had a significant increase primarily due to the increase in sales tax received and our cost savings of of other cost-saving measures that we had prepared to do as a result of the uncertainty related to the pandemic. But in addition, we have another page that details the American Rescue Plan transactions as of the end of the year of 2021. So this is another page that is accessible and reviewable by the citizens. It's on our website right now. And helps the information, the, the critical information that the county is working on to be accessible to, to everyone.
Great, thanks, Mitchell. I just want to point out, we really like the Popular Annual Financial Report. It's, it's much easier to read. The, the, there's better understandable graphics in it. It kind of, it's very high, it, it takes some of the, the high-level information from the annual financial report and helps explain it a little bit better. There's, there's more pictures and graphs and things. We hope that the citizens are able to, I guess, enjoy this report a little bit more than reading through, you know, 230 pages of, of graphs and, and things from our annual financial report. So, next slide, please. So I just briefly want to talk about our financial trends monitoring report. In the financial trends monitoring report, it opens up with an executive summary. We have 29 financial indicators that we, we measure. This year, 16 of those were positive and the majority of the rest were neutral. I believe we didn't have any go into the kind of the warning category, or I don't believe we have any in the warning category at this point. Find out that it also contains county councils fiscal policies that were adopted in 1982. There are 17 policies, we've had discussions about these previously. These policies were put in place to help the, the county finance staff account for financial transactions and also helps us guide in areas of budgeting and debt. And the finance areas of the county. I want to point out also that in the, this particular version of the trends report, we have put in a line which we call normalized data. We have actual and normalized data. There have been some impact from the federal funding that we've received. And we've tried to show what, we, we have shown what that impact is. But also if we exclude that, where our trends would have been. So that is what we mean by normalized data. So if we go to the next slide, please. We have a few examples of some of the trends, just, I think I selected just four. So here's an example of general fund revenue per capita, and this is adjusted for inflation. You can see the actual line is the solid line. And then the normalized line would be the, the dotted line. So you can see that we had in 2020, a significant increase in the general fund due to the, this was the CRF program at the time. We did not have a separate fund for that federal funding. It all ran through the general fund. So in order to show, show you the impact of that, we've included both what the trend would look like with that funding and, and without that funding. Next slide, please. Now, here's the general fund expenditures per capita. And again, adjusted for inflation, it, it shows a small bump due to the federal funding that was expended through the general fund. Had we not had that funding, you would, we would have fallen where the dotted line is. So you can see that we were still trending downward in our expenditures per capita. That looks like from 2021, where we've been just about flat, which is, I think, what we would have expected. So next slide, please. Here's a very interesting measure, actual FTEs per capita. As you know, the county's growing, we're over half a million residents at this point. Our FTEs within the county have held fairly, fairly consistent. And this, this is a, this measure includes actual FTEs rather than budgeted FTEs. So there's another component here where we know that we've had difficulty filling all of our positions. So we're, we continue this, this downward trend of the number of available staff we have to serve the population in the county. Okay, next slide, please, I have one more here, I think. Yeah, this is, this is something that I think everyone here is, has expected. This is our taxable sales of goods and services in the county. You can see that upward trend. And then if you look right at the, the tail end, the last two years, you can see kind of a, a jump where we've had some very strong retail sales over the last two years that have helped our sales tax collection in our, in our general fund. So these are just examples, this is just, excuse me, four examples of the trends that we have in there. Again, there's 29 there, it's, it's fairly comprehensive. We cover areas of revenue, expense, our debt. I didn't include a slide on our debt capacity, but over the last 10 years, our, our debt service requirements has has been reduced to about half. It's, it's a very interesting trend. We have a very strong economic indicators in our economic section as well. So I, I'd encourage you to take a look at those. If you have any questions on any particular graph or measure, we are always available to, to help you work through those. So next slide, please. Okay, I'm going to turn the time back to Mitchell for a second.
So the final report we want to discuss briefly is the impact fee report. The impact fee report reviews the revenues and the expenses of all of the impact fee districts and the impact fees that have been collected for traffic impact fee and also park impact fee. We are in, right now, the report is in draft status. As we're trying to reconcile with Public Works, some of the, some of these impact fees, the impact, the impact fee activity. We have potentially a couple of districts, park districts that are in what is called concurrency, meaning when we collect a impact fee, we have a certain time period that we're, we're required to spend that money. If we don't spend that money, then it comes into what is called concurrency. And there are a few department or a few districts that are in concurrency right now based on our evaluation. And so we're trying to confirm that with Public Works to make sure that once we produce the report, we have fully reconciled and are confident in the, in the numbers that are, we are being, that are being reported. So that is the final report that is in draft status. And we anticipate that being resolved with Public Works fairly soon and then we'll, we'll issue a final report.
Great, thanks, Mitchell. All of the reports that we've talked about today, with the exception of the impact fee report, because it's still in draft form, can be found out on the Clark County website. The, it's on the auditor page under financial reports. And I just want to make a couple of comments. You know, I heard a comment last night at the public hearing about the, the lack of transparency in our financial numbers or our financial reporting. And I want to let council know and, and the citizens that may be listening. Clark County is fully disclosing everything that we have reported. There's nothing that we, we hold back. We go above and beyond the minimum requirements of any financial reporting requirements. So I, I just want to assure council that the numbers are there. Whether it's revenues, expenses, fund balances, we report everything. And I think this is very timely. Yesterday, Chair Barrowman and I believe Counselor Rylander were able to attend our exit conference with our state auditors. And our state auditors have issued a clean opinion on, on all of our financial statements. We are, I believe, one of the leading counties in the state of Washington and how we approach our reporting and the ability that we have to produce these reports. We don't, you know, we're on the leading edge of the requirements for disclosure. And if anyone listening is, you know, concerned about how or what we're, we're reporting financially from the county, they are welcome to contact me or the auditor's office. And we will make sure that they get the information that they are looking for. So with that, counsel, I will turn it back to you for questions. We've just gone through these briefly. The reports for a few weeks to, to review. And if you have any questions about anything in particular, we can take those questions now or you're welcome to, to call me or contact myself or Mitchell or, or for a matter of fact, anyone on our financial services staff. So
Mark, just a comment. Yeah, just the comments that we hear sometimes from the public about the lack of transparency are really way off. I am so, so pleased with the manner in which your department makes things open, makes them accessible, has them online, is willing to explain them and so on. So sometimes I think, where in the world do these comments come from? And I think that in part, the following is the story. I think that people may look at the 200 and some odd pages of materials and be a bit overwhelmed and not have a clue how to tackle it. Maybe even with regard to the general fund, which is a smaller part of the overall financials. How in the world do they know how much a particular department received? It is a very complicated process. I think that is in part the issue. It is not one of transparency. It is one of the reader being able to understand and grasp what is being presented, in my opinion. And therefore, I really note your willingness as a department and a committee and so on to help the public and, and others who are in a position of need to know what this is all about, how to read it. And from what I understand, your willingness, and I've experienced it personally, because I've called you and said, Mark, how do I read this on page whatever? And you've been wonderful in explaining it in depth to me. And others can do that too. And I think that is what helps the public to get around this notion that we're not transparent because the county is. That's my humble opinion.
Thank you, Chair, I, we appreciate that. And, and we are, you know, we're, we're doing everything that we feel we can to make information available and be accessible as well. So, and if anyone, if anyone needs additional help, you know, we've, we've put a new report in place, the, the PAFR report is meant to be directed to citizens that may or may not understand, you know, the finance and accounting issues. So we're trying to improve. One question that I might ask counsel, you know, in the past, we've had a little bit more timely updates, we've done quarterly updates throughout the year. At one point, we went away from that due to, you know, some of the counselors' preferences, but if that's something that the council would like to do, return to those quarterly updates, maybe they'd be a little bit more timely throughout the year. We can certainly do that. At the, at a minimum, we've begun producing, I, I would say monthly financial reports, they're just a brief one-page report that is circulated throughout the finance team and it's made available to, to counsel through, you know, your access to the, to the workday system. We have more than just the four reports that we're presenting today available. If, if you would like to, to go that direction, so.
What do you think, counsel?
I have, can I, can I share some comments and thoughts?
Yes, please do, Counselor Rylander.
Excuse me, I had to clear my throat. So first off, I happen to think that one of the most important roles that a county council member can play is oversight of the financials. The, it's all about the money in the end. And so for me, I would think a quarterly summary, high level, I'm not talking hours, I'm talking, you know, 15 to 30-minute highlight overview on a quarterly basis would have distinct value. That's on that. Can I make some comments on the reporting information they've just shared, in particular, the trend report?
Of course, and let's get a sense of agreement with your first comment. Do other counselors concur with that? I certainly do.
Chair.
Yes, counselor?
Yeah, I, I would concur. I think, Mark, you know, I was a big supporter of quarterly financial reports. I think it's good for us to see them, the future council to see them on a regular basis. And it also adds that extra transparency for the public that we're talking about them every quarter and we're seeing the trends as they're, you know, developing over time.
So that's the majority of us, please go for that in the future. Counselor Rylander, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I, I was just going to say, we will schedule a update for the third quarter, which is now ending at the end of this month. Probably by the end of October, if maybe a month following the end of the quarter is what we'll shoot for.
Very good. Counselor Rylander.
And it, not to get away from Counselor Rylander's important comments, but just to answer your question. You know, I don't need a quarterly briefing. I do support a posted quarterly report in a prominent location. We've had these transparency discussions before, and these are important reports. And we keep getting from at least a very small portion of the segment, kind of spurious allegations. And we heard them just last night, you know, about privatization and commercialization and where's the, the interest and, and looking at shifting management of the jail. You know, having these reports available prominently, making it easy for the public to find them is always a good thing. Even the consent agenda, when we have all the warrants, you know, there's millions of dollars of bills we're paying there. And there was a comment about that. How come we don't know anything about that? Well, the answer is because you didn't look in the right place. It is available online. We, we had explored making that detail of warrants available on the consent agenda or as a separate issue. And it would have been volumes of data, volumes of financial data, because it represented hundreds of contract claims, payments. So it is very complicated, as you said, and it's the classic, some of the public just doesn't know what they don't know. But, you know, we need to be as transparent as we can and have a single place that's one click away from the public looking at our webpage and saying, okay, we need to look at the quarterly report. Where is it? And there it is to view. So thanks, I just wanted to kind of double tap on what everyone said. And I know Dick's got some really important comments.
We, we appreciate Counselor what you just said. However, three of us were interested in having that report orally. So that's the way it will be and that 30 minutes or 15 minutes, I'm sure will be beneficial for us all. So I just wanted to make sure we understood, that Mark understood that we do wish to go forward with that. So Counselor Rylander, it is in your court.
Thank you very much and appreciate the comments from Counselor. There is a lot of rhetoric, particularly in the last three or four or five months about the bloated government, the bloated county bureaucracy, the inefficiencies, too many employees, overpaid, et cetera. And, and those could all be accurate. But when we look at the facts and when we look at the data, I would strongly encourage people to look at the trend report. Because rather than just taking a snapshot of one year or even two years, looking over a period of time. And this trend report is about nine years roughly worth of data. And without going into all of the excruciating detail, because even the short report is about 29, 30 pages. There are so many indicators, in my opinion, that show that county government has actually been significantly more efficient and effective than the public might generally perceive. If you look at just some of the data, you'll note that the expenditures per capita in that nine-year period are down 14%. The adjusted inflation general fund expenditures are down 8%. The employees per capita has shrunk from 3.51 per thousand to 3.08 per thousand. If you go through the operating position, you look at the debt has actually decreased. You look at the economic growth, you look at the base, the size of the population, you look at the taxable goods and services. When you look at all of this data in total and, and really, really analyze it, it comes across strongly to me that the citizenry of Clark County should be extremely pleased at how efficient and how effective the county government has been over that period of time. And I don't say this lightly, because I'm a, I'm a pretty strong critic and I'm a big believer in as small a government as possible. And yet this data suggests to me that we are seeing a smaller government, not a larger government. So rather than just rhetoric and throwing numbers out and making statements and claims, I would really, really request that the public take the time to actually look at the facts and look at the data and make their own decisions on what they think is happening. And I believe that they will in total come out the other end with the opinion that we should be appreciative of the hard work and effort that the county and the employees have put in and the direction things are going. Now I'll get off my soapbox, thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from counsel?
Chair.
Yes, Counselor Olson?
Thank you, thank you. And Counselor Rylander, thank you. And Counselor Rylander, thank you. You've been singing off my song sheet. I've been saying this for six and a half years. And and it does matter and it does take the time to to really dig in and look at the numbers. And and you're absolutely right. The citizens of Clark County get a very good deal for the taxes they pay in this community and and the employees at Clark County are doing their very, very best to deliver those services every day. So I appreciate you making those comments and absolutely agree with you.
Just to segue very briefly and give credit where credit is due, I think Counselor Rylander was just published in the reflector with that summary, it's a good summary of this, of the highlights of this report. And like Counselor Olson, one of my first jobs, I thought, entering the county was, okay, how many employees do we have? How many do we really need? And, you know, looking at that aspect of the allegation of of a bloated government, because it goes back a lot farther than three or five months. But I I will tell you, just from my own research and diligence and working with two county managers, I came to the same conclusion that Counselor Olson did. We are running a tight ship. We have tighten the belt. We have so few employees for the amount of work and the enormous work that those employees do. It's really quite incredible how tight our belt is.
So Counselor Rylander, thank you for being on your soapbox, as you said, and that there was plenty of room on that box for the rest of us to hop up there, too, because we all apparently agree. Are there different comments from counsel? Anything that you wish to add, Mark?
No, counselor, counselors, I really appreciate your attendant attentiveness to the financial reports. Again, we are available anytime, any, you know, if you have any questions about them. We will look towards preparing a a quarterly update for you. And as usual, we are, you know, here to serve you and the citizens of Clark County. And on behalf of our our auditor, Gray Kimsey, I again appreciate the opportunity we've had to present these to you. So.
Great, thank you so much. And I'll look forward on a regular basis to that quarterly report. I think that's a great idea. Okay, let's move on into council time and close out the work.